I'm interested in this. We have evaluated it and decided that you're not wanting to reaccredit.
(laughing) Okay, we're going to get started. It's a little past four and I don't want to keep people waiting. This is a town hall meeting about the Middle States reaccreditation. It's the second in a series of town hall meetings. The first one was on the other side of campus and I'm pleased to say we had 60 people at that one. And including a number of people from east campus. But I think that our goal is to make sure that everybody, or as close to everybody as we can, is aware of what we're doing in terms of Middle States reaccreditation and has an opportunity to ask questions. So we're going to run you through, and I literally mean run you through, a PowerPoint presentation, calling your attention to some of the highlights about this and then open this up for more of an interactive discussion about the issue of Middle States reaccreditation. For those of you that don't know me, Charlie Robbins, I'm the vice provost here at Stony Brook, but I've also been asked to be the co-chair of the Middle States reaccreditation process. So that's the hat that I'm wearing over here today. Along with me is Dan Davis, who's my co-chair. He is a professor in geosciences and we are really thrilled that he agreed to be a part of this process. And Lauren Tackey Cushing, who is our Middle States coordinator. So she has been hired, we actually stole her from another university and we're very proud of that. And she has a lot of experience around both assessment and specifically around Middle States. So that is being, that her knowledge is being really helpful to us in terms of moving us forward. So just to set a reference point, we're coming up for our decennial evaluation, which means that we have to interact with the Middle States group basically every 10 years. So 10 years ago, we came up for a review. That was actually a focused review that largely focused on our undergraduate colleges and some of the work we were doing in undergraduate studies. To be perfectly honest with you, and I'm saying this even though the videotape is going, at that point, I was over here because I spent the first 20-something years of my Stony Brook life on this side of the street. And I would venture a guess to say that I had no idea that Middle States was here. And our goal is to make sure that in fact people know what's going on. Because Middle States is not just about west campus. Middle States is about our entire enterprise. And so it's something that we really need to be a part of. So the time before that, Middle States was here 20 years ago. And again, I was over here and probably didn't know that they were doing it. But that was the last, what we call a comprehensive review. So 20 years is a long time in the history of a university, in the history of anyone's life. And a lot changes and a lot goes on. So we really have a lot to really work on and look at. And that's what we're going to explain to you today. So let's just take a step back for a minute and people often want to understand the context of this. So what's this Middle States? What do they have to do with anything? So the federal government has decided that there needs to be some way of overseeing higher education, some way of understanding whether in fact universities, colleges, and it's really more than that. It's all programs post-high school. So degree granting programs post-12th grade. So it could be a seminary, it could be any kind of professional school, business school, anything past high school that grants a degree or a certificate comes under these standards. And so the way that this operates is that the country is divided into six regions. And we are located in the Middle States Association region, which is basically from Philadelphia up through New York. And actually down to Maryland and up through New York. They're located in Philadelphia. And all post-secondary degree granting institutions that are physically located within that region are accredited by the Middle States Association of Colleges. So it looks at Delaware, DC, Maryland, New Jersey, New York, Pennsylvania, Puerto Rico, and the Virgin Islands. So you can imagine that it's a lot of schools, it's a lot of universities that really have to demonstrate adherence to what's called the same standards of excellence. And Middle States, and I'll review this a little bit later on, Middle States has a series of 14 standards of excellence that we have to demonstrate compliance with. And as I said a minute ago, it really is all aspects of our enterprise. So it has to do with undergraduate education, it has to do with master's education, PhD education, it has to do with all of our healthcare providers, so our clinics, our programs, the hospital. To the point that when Middle States comes and visits us, within one or two weeks of that, a team will also be going to SUNY Korea because those students will be receiving Stony Brook degrees. So they'll be going to SUNY Korea to see then in fact what we're doing there is consistent with what we're doing here. And they'll also be visiting Southampton and Manhattan, but that's a little less dramatic than going all the way to Korea. So it really is about everything that we do. When I was first asked to be a part of Middle States and to chair Middle States, I thought it had to do primarily with undergraduate education and I figured that was my job, so I should say yes. And I did and then found out that that was only one little piece of it.
Although it is the piece that we went through a decade ago.
It is the piece that we went through a decade ago, yes. So what we need to do, and let me just say upfront that this presentation, as well as a great deal of other documentation, is available on the Middle States website, on the Stony Brook website. So you can get all of these PowerPoint slides as well as links to a lot of other valuable information. And that can be reached both right now on the university homepage, it's right up front. But it's also housed on both the president's webpages as well as the office of the provost webpage. So there's lots of ways to get that information. So what we're trying to do is to really demonstrate that our programs, our services are in fact consistent with the 14 standards of excellence, that we are mission-driven, that we have a focus on student learning outcomes, that we have certain goals for the institution and they permeate everything we do. So they permeate what we do in the classroom, they permeate what we do in our health services, and they permeate what we do in our research labs, and they permeate what we do in all of our business functions. So it has to do with allocation of resources. It has to do, to take a step back, do we have enough resources, which of course you never have enough? But how do we use the resources that we have? And are the staff, professional staff, faculty and others organized in such a way that it helps us to move ahead and to meet our goals? So as I mentioned, 20 years ago, we did a comprehensive review of the institution. 10 years ago, we did a focused review on the undergraduate colleges. So we have some options there. Following a number of us attending a meeting at the Middle States Commission in Philadelphia last year, we made the decision, and we, well actually we made a recommendation to the presidents and the provosts and they made a decision, that we would go ahead with a comprehensive review. We felt that this was a time of change for the university, that in fact the president has been here just for a period of three or four years. The provost has, at that point, had been here for less than a year. There were a number of people in leadership positions that had been here for relatively brief periods of time. So we felt that it was a good opportunity for us, a good opportunity to really look at what we do well, but also a good opportunity for us to look at what we can do better. And we recognize that all institutions, all large institutions, there obviously have to be some things that we can do better also. One of the issues that also gets asked about has to do with the issue of other accrediting bodies. And that's a real acute issue on this side of the street. Because all of the professional schools have external accrediting bodies. Obviously, the hospital has an external accrediting body, or many external accrediting bodies. And Middle States' position on that is, and we also have schools across the street such as engineering and several other programs that are also externally accredited. And Middle States' position on that is that that's good information for them to know. And essentially, we put that as a footnote in the appendix. But that doesn't mean that those programs don't need to be looked at. So even though the School of Medicine just recently finished, or probably the most recently from all the schools, finished their reaccreditation by the AAMC and we're really pleased with that, that doesn't mean that we don't have to discuss the School of Medicine. They don't take what the other agencies do as evidence that in fact the 14 standards of excellence of Middle States are met. All of what we do now needs to be evidence-driven. We need to prove a track record for what we're doing. We need to prove that the, that there are outcomes, that they're measurable, that in fact we measure them. And then most important, that we use that information to inform our decisions going forward. So for those of you, unlike me, that were aware of this process previously, it's very different than what it was. It's much more rigorous than it was. More than 70%, 75% of institutions that go through it now have to have follow-up secondary reports because there are questions raised. And it's absolutely not a rubber stamp. They're really looking to understand what we're doing and not just us saying what we're doing, but that we need to have proof of what we're doing. And part of this, I mentioned before, has to do with pressure from the federal government. But there's also pressure coming from the public, that in fact higher education is responsible in what it does, that it's delivering, what it says it's going to deliver. There's lots of money that goes through higher education. And both in terms of student loans, in terms of research grants, in terms of indirect support. And there really is an opportunity for us to demonstrate our worth and what we do. So we put together a planning committee to really begin to take a look at what we do and how we're going to do this. And as I said, Professor Davis is my co-chair in this enterprise. But you can take a look at this, I'm not going to read through this, but we really try to have some broad representation, to have people that, from both sides of the street, to have faculty, staff, and students represented on the planning committee, to ensure that we had some people from colleges and schools that have recently gone through accreditation, that can help us a little bit with that and what that experience has been like. And this group has been meeting regularly now for well over a year in working on this and trying to really produce the kind of report, the kind of self-study and get us through this process in a way that meets everybody's expectations. So for the academic year 2011, 2012, we spent all of our time working on a self-study design plan that we needed to submit to Middle States, that once they approved, that would give us permission to go ahead and undergo the full self-study. And it took us a year, literally, an academic year, to put together this plan and get it to be the kind of document that we were happy with. We tried to get, I sound like a student, but we tried to get it this big and it ended up being this big. And it is, again, if you want to read it, it has some really interesting information about Stony Brook, I think, about our university and as well as what our plans are. And that's available on the website. As I mentioned, we have tried to make this a process that is as transparent as possible. We want as many people to know what we're doing. So we've made, since this slide was done, we've made several more. So we've made upwards of 65 public presentations about Middle States now. And so we, it's a little hard for us to think of who doesn't know about Middle States, but we know there are lots of people. But any group that we are invited to, we don't always, we're not attached, so sometimes it's just one of us or two of us. But we will come and do presentations in your faculty senates, in your, any kinds of organizations that you have. Union meetings, other kinds of meetings. We really feel it's in all of our collective best interest to be able to do this and make sure that people know about it. Middle States has set the bar for us, that they want to be able to walk across the academic mall or walk out of any building on this campus and stop anybody and say, "Can you tell us where we are in the Middle States process?" and get an accurate answer. We're not sure that we're going to get there, but we're working very hard to make sure that there is a good core of people who know what's going on. Last May, May of 2012, we had the Middle States Vice President, who's our liaison, Tito Guerrero, come here. He was here for, I think, two days or two and a half days. He reviewed our self-study design plan. He met with our planning committee, he met with the president, he met with the provost, he met with a group of faculty and staff, and he met with a group of graduate, undergraduate, and professional students. And following all of that visit, he did give us, he couldn't do it on the spot, but he did ultimately send us a letter accepting the self-study design plan. He had some minor suggestions which we changed. And he then sent us a letter accepting our design plan and allowing us to proceed. We had the opportunity to go to the Middle States Annual Meeting in Philadelphia last week. And Dr. Guerrero was there and I went up after a session to introduce myself again. And I introduced myself and I started to say I was from Stony Brook. And he said, "Oh, you're from Seawolves." I knew Dexter would like that. So it was like, "That's right, I'm from Seawolves." And remember, Seawolves you liked, so will do well in this process. But it was good that he did have that recollection and remember that, and at least there was a connection there. So with that, go ahead to undertake the process, we were able to hire Lauren, which as I mentioned before, has been wonderful for us and critical in our process. And we've just about finished the search process, I looked to Dan because he was handling that, for two full-time data analysts. So that will be working with us, hopefully starting as close to the first of the year as we can get it through the process, that will be working with us to really help us have the evidence that we need to prove in fact compliance with the standards and what we're doing. We've decided, and again, this isn't unique to us, this is a model that's followed in many universities, but we've decided that the best way to deal with the 14 standards was to come up with a series of working groups that are charged with really looking at these standards. So each working group has two co-chairs who are working with around 12 to 14 members. We kept it at that number because we felt that in order for it to be really a working group, we needed to keep it relatively small, although I'm really pleased to say, and actually, some of the groups have grown since then, but I'm really pleased to say that we had an incredibly great response from the campus community. Had many, many, many more people asking to be on committees, people who have been volunteered by others to be on committees, than we actually were able to accommodate in the committee. So right now, we have 80 people, more than 80 people, working on, looking at the standards, working within their, in their groups, working with the planning committee. And our goal is to have a draft from each of these working groups. We're getting an initial draft actually of their plans within the next month and then an actual draft from each working group by the end of this spring semester, the 2013 spring semester. That will then give us a chance to work on that over the course of the summer, to try to put that together so that, and again, I know this is something that all of you have gone through accreditation, know about, trying to put all those pieces together and have it come out sounding in one voice, speaking for the university. And we also launched on Middle States website that I referred to before, and we had our first town hall meeting in November. And this is our second town hall meeting now. We wanted to make sure we were on both sides of the street because it's really critical. I think it's critical for the future of the university, but it's critical for Middle States that we really demonstrate that we are one university and that Nichols Road is just a road that runs down through the campus, but in fact that we're one university. So this is, and again, I'm going to go through this very quickly because this is all available to you on the website. And there's nothing you need less than to have somebody standing here reading to you. So there are 14 standards, there are six work groups. So they're divided up among them, but this gives you an idea of the kinds of things that we're looking at and who have been selected as the co-chairs. And again, all of the co-chairs represent faculty and staff, but there are undergraduate, graduate, and professional students on all of the working groups. So we feel that we can get an adequate representation of all of their voices. So Working Group 1, which is the actual planning committee, is taking responsibility for looking at mission and goals. Mission, vision, and goals is critical because everything else has to emanate out of that. We have to prove that we're, that we work in a way that is derived and consistent with our mission and goals and how that's done. Work Group 2 is looking at planning, resource allocation, institutional renewal, institutional resources, and Standard 7, which is institutional assessment. There are a number of areas where universities that do have issues, sometimes have trouble. And the two areas that that is likely is to happen are institutional assessment, which is Standard 7, and student learning outcome assessment, which is Standard 14. So we are focusing a great deal on the two assessment standards. And you'll hear a little bit more about that as we go forward. And again, for you from professional schools on this side of the street, that's a little bit easier for you to wrap your heads around because you're required by your external bodies to have learning outcomes for each course, to have learning outcomes for your programs. So that's different than some of the other academic programs on campus where there's more of a culture shock, culture shock, culture change, which becomes a culture shock that's needed. Work Group 3 is looking at issues of leadership and governance, administration, and the issue of integrity. I want to say two things about that. Number one is that I think integrity, and I've made this really clear to all of the working groups, while integrity stands as it's a standalone standard, I believe that integrity and discussing integrity has to be woven through all of what we do because it's very difficult to say that we do anything well if we don't do it with integrity. So I think it's critical that we demonstrate integrity in all of our processes. And in terms of leadership and governance and administration, I just want to make one point. Again, at this meeting in Philadelphia, the keynote speaker was Nancy Zimfer, the SUNY chancellor. And she was talking about accreditation, she was the keynote. And one of the points that she made to us, not as part of a keynote, but when we were talking to her before she went up, was that some of the SUNY campuses have had trouble or issues with Middle States around leadership and governance and administration simply because it is such a complicated system. So that she was urging us to use care and caution in how we describe really our governance structure and how what goes on here relates to, the president relates to the governing body of the campus, the Stony Brook Foundation, how it relates to Albany and the SUNY Board and the SUNY trustees and the chancellor and her staff. And that, you know, that I think, and Dan I think made this, a good point of this in a meeting yesterday, that's something that we can do. That's something that's, it's not easy. But it's something that we can look to some of our SUNY colleagues that have gotten through this process and done well and ask how they've explained it and try to learn from that, as well as just really for us to begin to understand what the process is. Whereas, again, the assessment is more of a cultural issue. And so that's how we, at least in our minds, separate that. Standard 4 is looking at student missions and retention, student support services. And again, that's critical for you to think about because we will have to demonstrate consistency between the services that are available on, the services and processes that are in place on west campus as well as on east campus. I for one, know that there is some divergence, but we are working very diligently to really bring those as close together as we possibly can. Working Group 5 is looking at one standard. They're looking at the standard about faculty. And it has to do with how we, do we have the appropriate faculty? Are they appropriately, is their background appropriate? Are they appropriately trained? But beyond that, and much more important, do we support the faculty? Do we give them the resources that they need to carry out the mission as we ask them to do it? So if we're asking them to do research, teaching, and service, are we providing the support and resources necessary for them to be able to do that effectively? Do we look at issues of diversity within the faculty and the teaching staff? How do we do that? And one of the things that we gleaned from looking at how other major AAU universities respond to Middle States, that there are lots of differences. They all do it somewhat different than each other. The one thing, and I literally mean this, the one thing that they all did uniformly was to have a group looking at the faculty standard alone. So while we didn't necessarily understand why that required its own working group, we weren't quite ready to buck that too much and tie it to other things. So we left that as a standalone. And then finally, Group 6 is looking at educational offerings, is looking at our general education program. And at least one of you were at a meeting this morning about general education program. And we're in the process of changing that. We've been working on it for five years. I wasn't involved five years ago, but I've been involved since I've gone across the street. And we had hoped to have it in place by fall of 2013, before Middle State comes. At this point, it looks much more likely that it will put in place for full-time freshmen, full-time first-time students coming in the fall of 2014. Which will give us a little bit more to explain because we won't have a track record with it yet. But we'll have to at least explain what led us up to this process and how we got here. One of the, what we were meeting about this morning is that it's our position, and I don't mean Middle States' position, it's the office of the provost's position, that we would like to have one general education standard for the campus. We believe that having students graduate with a BS or a BA degree from Stony Brook should mean that they have successfully been able to complete a certain course of study. Right now, we have many pockets on campus that don't follow the same general education program. And so we're working very hard to see that programs on east campus, west campus, professional schools, non-professional schools, that students try to closely align their general education requirements with the campus general education requirements. That was a little editorial off-topic. Related educational activities, anything we do that offers a certificate program, that offers a certificate from a school. I know, again, what I'm most familiar with, I know social welfare has a number of certificate programs. I believe the other schools on this side do also, as well as on the other side. So we have to be able to demonstrate how those are consistent with our mission, how those are consistent with what we do. how those are consistent with what we do. And then finally, the assessment of student learning. And that is one that we will have to pay attention to. Again, the professional schools, I think, are ahead of the other schools. Not necessarily because they want to be, but because they're required to be. And I'm not, I want to be very clear that I'm not criticizing anybody because the expectation wasn't there. So we need to really help people to understand. And I should have said this earlier, and I'll say it about assessment, but it's really about this whole process. We have to help people to understand that for us to do our jobs well as educators, we need to have learning outcomes. The only way then that we know if we're effective is that we have learning outcomes that are measurable. And so the changes that we may be making for Middle States in the short run, I think are really changes that are making this a better university and a stronger university for all of our students. And I'll, speaking on behalf of Dan and myself, we both made it very clear, independent from each other. But we both made it very clear to both the president and the provost that the only way that we would get involved in this process, and the only way that we would ask lots and lots and lots of our colleagues to get involved in this process, is if in fact, we had their assurance that this was not a process to sort of just check off boxes. That this was a process that was really going to impact this institution going forward for the next decade. And they have given us their assurance of that. We have taken that absolutely at face value and believe that we are really in a good position to move Stony Brook as positive as the trajectory is that Stony Brook's been on. And there's no doubt that it is. We believe that we can take it even further. We believe that we can both accelerate the trajectory and have it pointing up a little bit more by the things that we do in this process. So we are convinced that this is critical for our institution. It's critical for us to be accredited for a lot of reasons. But it's even more critical for us to sort of pick up a mirror and do some self-examination. It's been a long time. Again, some of the programs and colleges and schools have done it independent from each other. But our goal is to move outside of these silos and really take a 10,000-foot view of where we are as an institution, where we are as an enterprise, and really put that together. I'm now going to read to you the definitions of all the standards because, again, you can do that. I just want to highlight the timetable, the timeline that we've been following, and then hopefully open this up for questions. So we started back in the summer of 2011. It seemed like we had lots and lots and lots of time ahead of us. And all of a sudden, now it's like almost 2013. I'm not sure how that happened. But we are making good progress. We're actually pretty much where we had planned to be. So we had our design plan. Everything takes a little bit longer than you think it's going to be. And I think that's just true of everything. And there's enough of a cushion that we can have that things take a little bit longer or a little bit longer for people to get back to us and still be in line with where we want to be. So we've gone through our work in terms of the self-study design plan. We had that approved by Dr. Guerrero. We've appointed our working groups. We've appointed our co-chairs. Our goal is by the end of this next spring semester that we will get our initial reports from the working groups. What we'll also have the opportunity to do is to describe to Middle States the kind of evaluators that we would like. So what we've asked for, and this has come directly from the president on behalf of the committee, is that we've asked for people to come who come from AAU universities. So they have some understanding of the kinds of things that we do. We've asked that they come from AAU universities that have a health sciences center and preferably a hospital attached to them. So they would understand some of the mechanisms for how that works. We've asked that the chair of the evaluation team preferably be a president of an AAU university. And from there, from that point on, it's now up to Middle States to come up with both the chair of the team as well as the members of the team. The only say that, and I put "say" in quotes, the only say that we would have is if somebody, if we felt that somebody that was appointed to evaluate us had some kind of issue with us. They used to work here and left on poor terms. And the president didn't feel that they could, you know, look at us really, you know, in a fair, objective way, that kind of thing. But other than that, it's up to Middle States to decide who comes in as an evaluator. And we've been told that we should expect a team of a chair, the evaluation chair, and 11 members to come here for a week. To really determine that in fact, what we put in the self-study is in fact, real. We have a great writing department here. And I guess they want to make sure that this isn't a product of their fiction course. So we will have to be meeting, and many of you will be asked to meet with representatives of the evaluation team when they're here. And with 11 people here for a week, they really will have an opportunity to look at a lot. There's no question about that. They will then, before they leave that week, they will then give us at least an interim report of what they thought. Again, that mirrors much of what you've experienced in your own accreditation processes. And then beyond that, in June of 2014, 2014, they will then, so they will be here in spring of 2014. And by the June 2014 meeting of the commission, they will submit their findings to the commission. And it is then up to the commission to decide what the outcome is. Our hope is that we will get full 10-year reaccreditation. That is our absolute goal. That is what we want to accomplish. We understand that that can come, that can be given, 10-year reaccreditation, no strings attached, that's it. You did great. But we recognize, and this is through absolutely no fault of anybody, that they may have, for instance, concerns about the general education program. So if we're changing it, they may ask us, can you send us in two years, an updated report with evidence that in fact, the new general education program is meeting the goals that you put in place for it? And we'll have to do that. And that would be absolutely fine. If we got that, we'd be very pleased. And so that kind of thing is fine. We also can, if we are deemed as out of compliance with only one of the standards, with any one of the 14 standards, they can put us on warning. And there are a number of schools currently on warning, including Suffolk Community College, which is currently on warning. And when a school is on warning, they have, and this is federal guidelines, they have two years to address whatever the deficiency is. They have two years to address the one or more standards that are outstanding. We don't even want to let that into our minds as a possibility. So we're going with full reaccreditation for a 10-year period. We believe that a university such as ours should get that. But a lot of responsibility falls to all of us as a community to be able to demonstrate what we're doing, which we think is very positive. What we're doing to even improve on what we're doing. And then have the evidence and be able to measure it and have it influence our decisions going forward. So finally, this is our, well, this shows you where our webpage is. That just shows that the students are really excited about Middle States coming. That's not really true, but I think it's funny to say it. But this is where you can find the portal to enter the Middle States site. When it's not here any longer, then you will be able to find it, as I said, on both the Office of the Provost and the president's office websites. I'd like, Dan was able to do these screenshots for me to make sure that we're able to do that. We have really positive messages from both the president and the provost talking about the importance of reaccreditation. Again, both for the institution now to meet the expectations of the federal government, but also moving forward in the future. And then finally, and this is really important to us, we've set up a Google mail address that we monitor on a daily basis. So anybody in the campus community can either with their name or not with their name, send us any questions they have, any concerns they have, anything that they think that is involved in these 14 standards that Middle States, we might, the Middle States Committee might be concerned about and should take a look at. So we've gotten, we've gotten only a handful so far. Some of them are quite interesting. And that's, but I can assure you that we are taking them all very seriously. Where appropriate, we're assigning them to the individual working groups if they're dealing with issues that they're looking at. But it's a way for us, because no matter how hard we try to do this, our view is limited by our perspective. And that's why it's really important to have everybody have an opportunity to open it up and really see where we are. And I see from the hour that I've gone, a little bit longer than I had anticipated doing. And so I apologize to my colleagues for that. But with that, do you have any comments or should we just open it up?
I think we can open it up. I think it is important to emphasize that although this initial phase, Middle States accreditation phase is externally driven, this really is about something that's ongoing. And that's, it's not just to be viewed as something imposed upon us, but really an incentive to be doing things we want to be doing better anyway in order to continue to improve the university. Other, do we have questions? Yes?
I'm working for Big Brother, I'm calling from their accreditation process. And I was wondering if there are resources that I can use from this process. I know you've had the names of the co-chairs of the work groups up there. I wonder if there are the names of the members of the work groups?
They're actually on the, I'm sorry. The webpage that we set up actually has a documents list, which gives you all the documents from Middle States. So that might be helpful as well. Charlie went over the different standards, but the actual publication from Middle States gives you the fundamental elements that are supposed to be met. And also there are documents on there regarding student learning assessment. And then we have a link that goes through the timeline for the whole process, goes through all the working group members and additional information about the working group. So feel free, that's all online. And if you can't find something you're interested in, just drop us an email. Any other questions?
Dexter.
Just a quick comment. My understanding is that the majority are going to get follow-up. I mean, it's not unusual that it's the exception.
Right. More than 75%, and that number's increasing each year. That's why the slide was a little outdated. This past academic year, more than 75% of the institutions that were reviewed had some follow-up. And we're talking about major institutions. So Cornell was up, Princeton was up, not fly-by-night programs. So it's something to be anticipated. And, you know, so we will not be surprised if there's a follow-up report requested. Our goal is to avoid going on warning. But you're right, it doesn't mean that there's a serious problem if we have a follow-up report. And I think we need to help people be prepared to understand that in anticipation.
And it really is appropriate that there be this level of scrutiny. There is a lot of, among other things, federal dollars involved. So it's appropriate that there are these accrediting organizations like Middle States and that as they are held to high standards, they hold the universities to high standards. And again, that whole process can become a real positive in the future. Because this is not, all of this isn't going to end once we get, we anticipate being a positive report back from Middle States. The whole idea behind this is that this will be an ongoing process of doing all of this self-evaluation better than we have in the past and using it better to continue to improve the university.
The other piece of the context, and I didn't mention this before, is that, and if you pick up literally any newspaper at all, the public also has concerns about higher education and higher education dollars. So I think we have to be able to demonstrate our, both integrity but also our effectiveness in what we're doing. And we have to be able to measure that. And I think there are fair questions. And we need to be prepared to respond to them.
And I think it's also fair to say that many parts of the university, in many things we do, we do a much better job of doing what we do than documenting how well we do what we do. And I think we need to do a better job at that end.
Absolutely.
Yeah, my question is going to be the idea of, when you talk about the entire university community being able to give input or give, you know, express concerns, does that, would you define community? I mean, are you looking at the community's interest, for example? So broader than just?
It's, you know, the truth is that it's as broad as it could be. So we won't know, if we get an anonymous question at middlestates@stonybrook.edu, you know, if someone says, I'm a faculty member and I'm concerned about this, or I'm a student, I'm concerned about that. I'm a staff member at the medical center and I feel that, then we'll know. It could be somebody, you know, who lives three towns away from here. Or lives in California that wants to, I mean, we really won't know. And it's designed, even though that probably makes it a little harder, it's designed that way intentionally so that people can feel comfortable raising questions and asking about issues and calling our attention to things. So community is defined literally as broadly as it can be.
You know, Dan sent us, sent around the Cornell's Middle States assessment document. And please correct me if I'm wrong, but I somehow recall that as far as the Cornell while medical school goes, that a lot of what was in there was quoted from their own, so they actually used a lot of their previous assessment.
Right. We will, let me just speak to that for a minute. We will clearly, and that's a strength of theirs and that's a strength of ours. So we will look to our medical school, nursing, social welfare. We will look to our engineering program and we will do that. The reality is that we need to demonstrate how all of those pieces hang together into one university. And again, and now I really sound like an undergraduate student. The Middle States self-study, which is different than most of your studies, but the Middle States self-study for the entire enterprise is held to less than 100 pages. And then we can have some appendix, which is going to be very big, I can assure you. But we really need to be very succinct and very clear in what we're saying. So we can use quotes, we can pull different programs together. But again, our goal is to show this as a whole, as one. And how we're able to show the assessment. Because the fact that the assessment is successful in social welfare or in medicine doesn't mean that it's successful in undergraduate biology. In our case, it actually is successful in undergraduate biology. But we need to be able to show that. Or in philosophy or history, where it may be a little bit different. And that's what our job is for, and actually, not our job. That's what the community's job is for the next year, to be able to pull all of that together. job is for the next year to be able to, to pull all of that together. Any other questions? Well, I thank you for your attention. Thanks for coming.